December, because she's got December jammies on.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening. The meeting of the Board of the Sedalia School District 200 is called to order at 6:30. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present.
Mrs. Barth Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kimpton?
Here.
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you.
You will now stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognitions and presentations, anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table and then approach the podium, providing your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satin and he will share those items with board members at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to three minutes and to one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. First recognition is our John T. Belcher Scholarship recipient. Each year, the Missouri School Boards Association's foundation, which is called Future Builders, awards eighteen thousand five hundred in scholarships to students in MSVA's member districts. A winner is selected from each of the seventeen MSVA regions and one overall state winner is selected. Each regional winner receives a one thousand dollar scholarship and is automatically eligible to compete for the statewide winner who receives an additional fifteen hundred dollars. The school board of each MSVA member district is eligible to nominate one high school senior to apply. We, the Sedalia School District 200 Board of Education and the Sedalia School District Foundation, would like to recognize Parker Ellison as the winner of the John T. Belcher Scholarship to represent our district. He will be awarded with a five hundred dollar scholarship from the Sedalia School District Foundation in July. Congratulations.
And with the big check, Parker. You have the big check with us. Okay, yeah, we'll make it festive. It'll look great in July when it gets announced.
Absolutely.
Come on, Parker.
Yes, we've had two more of our security officers, Scott Patterson at Washington Elementary and Jeff Gray, Smith Cotton High School, who have completed requirements to earn designation as school safety specialist. The honor of achievement through MSVA Center for Education Safety requires advanced training and online professional development. We are very proud that these two have participated and completed that coursework.
Very good. Congratulations to them. And then you have the next one, too?
Yes, I would like to, and this is just brand-new, hot-off-the-press, so I found out this morning, this morning, Ms. Kelly McFatrick from Skyline, would you please We'd like to recognize Ms. McFatrick. She was nominated and selected as the West Central Conference Principal of the Year, representing Sedalia 200 very, very proudly, and we're very excited for this accomplishment. So I think she deserves just recognition for that. That's awesome.
Thank you.
You have a speech prepared?
Yes, I do. No, they, I was, it's an honor to be, of course, selected, but this morning, they surprised me at Skyline. We have a Monday assembly, a morning assembly on Monday, doing silly string. We're in our holiday era, and today was work-at gear. So they come to school, and I was extremely surprised, but I was also like, really? You couldn't tell me that? I would have been probably dressed up a little bit nicer for today, but it was, it truly is an honor, and I appreciate all of the elementary administrators coming over and central office this morning, and we were able to give a tour to a couple of the principals from other districts who were kind of responsible, have some responsibilities at the central level for nominating and administrative responsibilities. So we were able to give them a tour of Skyline, and so excited to continue. I understand I have quite a bit of work to do now in preparing for the next step, so we'll see, see how that goes, but thank you.
Congratulations.
Next is Sedalia School District Foundation, Deidra.
Hello.
Hello.
Last Thursday, we had our little holiday get-together, kind of recapped what we'd done throughout the year. You know, we bought a tent for homecoming this year. That was a highlight of our years, to have a successful tailgate, but we've also had lots of other successes, including some of our most recent ones, which was a three thousand dollar donation for our dual-credit scholarship program. So we're pretty excited about that. Anytime we can award some extra dual-credit scholarships is always a good time. Tonight, we, I also have the funds ready to disburse for the Brendan Eisenminger Student Impact Fund. Those applications were due last Friday, and I'll make it easy on you guys, everything you asked for has been approved. So ta-da, sixty thousand, six thousand one hundred dollars in approvals this year for that fund among almost every school, so we're excited to be able to award that for this season, and I can tell you, you have, I don't think there's an administrator or a district employee out there that doesn't care the utmost about their students, and so it was terrific to see all of the requests that we had and excited to give that money out for this season, so, you know, onward and upward for the foundation, right?
Thank you. Next is NEA, I see Mr. Jenke.
All right, good evening. I'm going to keep this as short as possible. I have a six-hour final for my current PhD course this week, so I'm going to go home and study, so I apologize for not staying for the entire meeting. Last year at this time, I took the opportunity, because we're kind of in a lull, to say thank you, and so I'm going to kind of continue that again this year and say thank you to the board especially. You guys, I know that it's unpaid, and you guys do this for the sake of just loving kids and the time away that you, away from your families that you spend here doing this work that's so needed. You know, we appreciate that so much. And central office, Dr. Fraley, same to you guys. Since we've kind of grown in the last few years, we have always appreciated the conversations that we have with everyone. Oftentimes, they're hard conversations, they're focused, but they're honest. We don't lie to each other, and so I've always appreciated, you know, stepping into this role and being able to have those hard conversations with you guys, because they are important to the success of our district. You guys listen, you appreciate that, and I can't thank you enough for that. I mean, we still have certain issues to address. I know you guys are concerned about retention, recruitment, things like insurance and affordable daycare and building morale and taking things off of teachers' plates so they can focus on teaching and all of those things. I know that we'll be successful working together on that, because we've built that relationship back and forth on that honesty and integrity. So again, I just want to say thank you to everybody up here. I appreciate all of you. I've been to enough meetings across the state, and I know that this is not really the norm with a lot of school districts, especially larger school districts, and so thank you for the opportunities that we've had to work together, and thank you for what you do for our district. So I just want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas, and, you know, next month, the New Year, we'll address anything we need to, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SCEA?
SCEA is honored tonight to give out four two hundred fifty-dollar scholarships to educators continuing their education. We had a total of twelve scholarship applicants. It was a really hard decision, but we were able to narrow it down. So I would like, our first scholarship winner is Emily Overstreet. Emily is in her twenty-fourth year of teaching at Hebrew Hunt Elementary. She is currently attending the University of Central Missouri for a master's in English Language Learners, and she is planning on graduating in the spring of 2026. Amber has taught for thirteen years and is at Sedalia Middle School. She is attending the University of Missouri Columbia to earn a doctorate in Education Leadership and Policy Analysis, and she plans to graduate in July of 2024. And I know that she had a sick child, so she was not able to attend. Our third is for Kayla Zabornak. Did I say that right? I hope. Kayla is at Washington Elementary, and she's taught there for nine years. She's attending Northwest Missouri State University, and she is getting her master's in Special Education. She plans to graduate December of 2025. And our last scholarship goes to Mary Holston. Mary works at Smith Cotton Junior High. She taught for twelve years. She's attending the University of Central Missouri, where she is receiving her education specialist and school leader K-12, and plans to graduate in the summer of 2025. All right, so SCEA would like to congratulate all of our winners. Additionally, I would just like to clarify some misinformation that circulated around the Sedalia 200 School District in regards to the educator of the year that SCEA does. SCEA educator of the year criteria is aligned with MSTA and DESI, and hopes that we can seamlessly move forward our educator of the year to regional or state levels, where they can earn an even higher accolade. However, or, sorry, SCEA is happy to honor the educator of the year regardless of their professional organization membership, if they're a member of our association. So to put it simply, you do not need to be a member of SCEA or MSTA to be awarded the SCEA educator of the year. You just have to be an educator in the Sedalia 200 School District. However, if the winner of our district level wants to move on to regional level, they will need to be a member of SCEA. And on that note, I would just like to remind everyone that our nominations close January 1st, and so if you have not yet nominated an educator, I highly encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved as presented. Consent agenda items four point one to four point four. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four point five, payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four point six, payment of bills with Ms. Moon abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to decision, unfinished business, Dr. Fraley on best purchasing.
Yes, I brought this to you last, in our last meeting, in response to transportation needs and the fact that, once again, that the ten-passenger Ford Transit van is no longer being manufactured, and therefore it puts us in a bind with compliance with state statute and regulations on how many passengers can be in a vehicle or they have to be in a yellow school bus. And I had made the suggestion that we approve the purchase of up to four of the smaller yellow school buses, those are fourteen passenger, fourteen, fifteen-passenger, depending on manufacturer. Both Ford and Chevrolet make one of those models. They are gasoline models only. There are no diesel options and/or electric and/or hybrid for those buses. And you've seen attachment, a proposal from Southern Bus Mobility. I had them work up just a base price that we could look at, so you would have a form of reference as to what it costs. The example that you see before you, it's attached in the board packet, is for a, one that's equipped with a wheelchair access, which reduces the passenger capacity down to twelve. At a minimum, we look at potentially two of those buses and then two of the, without the wheelchair access, that we could be used more in line with our small programs as far as what we've discussed with tennis, golf, those smaller organizations, speech debate, et cetera, to take those trips. You don't need the full-blown CDL license, which has become problematic in finding drivers for that size of a bus that's under twenty-six thousand pounds.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve the district to solicit for the purchase of four fourteen- or fifteen-passenger yellow school buses and/or ten-seated passenger vans as available for purchase based on the current quote for the small passenger school bus as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not, all not in favor, say nay. Very good. Motion is approved. Next is Mr. Norton.
I bring back to you the revisions for our courses for the 24-25 school year. The only update I have, after talking with the junior high and how we're transitioning our new math courses, that transition might take an extra year as they're working through that, so we might not be transitioning those classes as quickly at the junior high level, the eighth-grade level. The eighth graders might stay on regular algebra for one more year. Other than that, no other changes other than what was proposed.
Are there any questions for Mr. Norton? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve the Smith Cotton High School Course and Student Resource Guide, starting year 24-25, as presented with the additional info he provided tonight.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Very good. It's approved. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle?
Yes, our Board of Education was provided an update at our November meeting on our district special education numbers. Since the 2018-19 school year, we've increased by one hundred and forty-one students with special needs. Current special education number totals are at the loftest one hundred and fifty-one. K-12, seven hundred and forty-six students, and that total with both combined are eight hundred and ninety-seven. I shared in the packet numbers per building, but tonight I'll just point out Smith Cotton Junior High with one hundred and seventy-two, and the Smith Cotton High School with two hundred and eight students with special needs. Thinking back on our November meeting, we discussed that our Board of Education, our district administration, has been very supportive over the years and allowed us to add needed teaching and support staff when it was, when it was time to add due to this growth, and that we discussed that we had not added a leadership position to support that growth, because we wanted to take care of our teaching and paraprofessional staff first. We did utilize ESER funds in the last school year and this school year to add a special education process coordinator to be split between the junior high and high school, and we believe that that has been a great thing for the district in talking to our administrative team, our district-level team, and our special education process coordinators. They feel that's still the best option moving forward, so the district is seeking Board of Education approval to continue with that process coordinator position by allowing it to become a district position moving forward in the 24-25 school year.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve to add a process coordinator position to be split between Smith Cotton High School and Smith Cotton Junior High as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. Very good. Thank you. Dr. Fraley, the grant writer position?
Yes, last month, I brought to the board a proposal that the district would bring back the grant writer position that had been reallocated several years ago. Once again, this position should pay for itself many times over in grant allocations in the form of revenue towards the school district. Person would write the grant proposals, apply for reimbursements, monitor implementation, collect necessary data, and evaluation. I'm recommending that this position be placed on a certified salary schedule with the CAPS Director position, which ranges from step one at sixty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars to step thirty, which would be one hundred and six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. It would be a two hundred and fifty-day, full-time, twelve-month employee. I would recommend that we would do this for a minimum of three years. That's what is recommended for such a position, to see if it truly takes that much time for it to work itself out, and so we can effectively evaluate its value.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley? Not, I will ask for a motion to approve the grant writer position as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. It is approved. Dr. Fraley, in district travel reimbursement?
Yeah, I brought this also to the board last month for discussion, has to do with the in-district travel reimbursement allocated for district employees that travel regularly from building to building to building around town. This amount had not increased. It did not keep up. Our out-of-district travel reimbursement follows the IRS reimbursement rate. We have, the in-district has not kept up with that. I did a simple calculation with the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, that the binding power of the dollar has increased thirty percent over that period of time, so I was asking for a thirty percent increase to bring that up and match that more in line with what we're reimbursing out-of-district costs for in-district mileage.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve in-district travel reimbursement rates for employees that regularly travel across the district from building to building to point six five five cents per mile as presented.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay.
I'm going to abstain from this one.
Okay, you have that. Okay, it is approved. And Mr. Frye and Ms. Estes, the Sedalia Middle School Tiger Pack?
Yes, good evening. Last time I was here, I discussed creating a booster club for Sedalia Middle School. Since then, after speaking with my staff and different ones, we have decided to change it to Sedalia Middle Schools Tiger Pack. Again, the purpose of it would be to work hand-in-hand with parents, staff, and community to boost morale for both students and staff and provide support where needed. So in your board packet, you will see that we have updated the bylaws and have changed the name from SMS Booster Club to SMS Tiger Pack. I'm asking for approval.
Any questions for Mr. Frye?
Why are we approving bylaws of a 501(c)(3)? It's actually not part of the district. It is aligned with the district, but we're not members, we're not, members of the faculty can be directors. Why are we approving an organization's bylaws?
I, it wouldn't necessarily, you're correct in that, of course, the recognition, because we do not have to recognize any type of nonprofit and/or whether that be an athletic booster club or a PTA or a PTO.
Okay. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering why we're doing it. There's no need for us to do this.
Because it can operate on its own entity if, if we so choose to, to recognize that entity.
Okay, all right.
So if, if, are you making a motion?
No, I'm not going, I'm not going to make a motion. I'm not opposed to it, it's just that it's not necessary for this organization to be created. It's not, it's, our approval is not necessary for this organization to be created.
That, that's why I was going to ask if you were making a motion to amend that?
No, I'm not, I'm not making any motion, I'm just asking about this.
Because whether it's, what, what goes down in record as Board of Education, if we are, if, if someone makes a motion, that we'll recognize that and not necessarily approving bylaws?
I'll make a motion that we recognize the Sedalia Middle School Tiger Pack with the attached bylaws.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, say nay. It is approved. Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Thank you.
And now to decision, Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Do you have the next two?
I do. I have six point one and six point two. We had two additional applications for the Tiger Paraprofessional, the Teacher Scholarship for the incoming semester, the semester that will start in January, and so six point one is for Ms. Zara Hoover. Ms. Zara Hoover is currently employed at Skyline. Ms. Zara Hoover is currently employed at Skyline, she's fulfilling, fulfilling a full-time instructional position while she works to complete her educational certification. She is also our high school cheerleading sponsor as well, so she's been with the district for a couple of, couple of years and came highly recommended. She's already working towards her certification, so this will just help her in that process. So, my recommendation would be for the board to vote, vote to approve her for the Tiger Paraprofessional Teacher Scholarship to begin in the January twenty-twenty-four semester.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Very good, and the next one?
Yes, six-point-two is our second Tiger Paraprofessional to Teacher Scholarship. This is Ms. Amanda Goodall, who has worked at Parkview Elementary. Again, comes highly recommended and is already approved and working towards her certification. So, it'd be great to keep them on scholarship and keep them in our teacher pipeline coming as soon as they gain their certification. So, again, my recommendation would be to approve Ms. Goodall for the Tiger Paraprofessional to Teacher Scholarship to begin in the January, spring twenty-twenty, or spring twenty-twenty-four semester.
Any questions for Mr. Curry? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Move approval.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you. Hollison Miller Building Improvements, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, the main roof area of Smith Cotton Junior High is part of our building improvement projects with Hollison Miller, architects that our Board of Education approved for the pursuit of bids in the past. A pre-bid building, excuse me, a pre-bid meeting was held on November eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and then a bid opening was held on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The roofing project and bid total also includes masonry work on the interior walls on the same areas where the roof work will need to be completed. We had a total of three contractors that submitted bids. Cornell Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated, out of Independence, Missouri, bid the project at one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Delta Roofing Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, come in at one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and Missouri Builder Service from Jefferson City, Missouri, bid at one million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred. Project timelines for this work would be from January through September of twenty-twenty-four. The team at Hollison Miller stated that the bids were competitive from all companies. Hollison Miller, along with districts from Raytown, Pleasant Hill, Harrisonville, and Green Valley, reported positives on working with Cornell and their ability to complete this project as expected. The district is seeking Board of Education approval to accept the low bid of one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand from, from Cornell to move forward with this project.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cur, or, Mr. Pyle, sorry?
Move approval.
Very good, and a second, please?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the roof maintenance repairs, Smith Cotton High School and the junior high FEMA?
Yes, the district needs to address roof leaks at Smith Cotton High School and at Smith Cotton Junior High in the FEMA building area, so we just talked about the main area, the main original building, but this addresses the FEMA area. The district utilizes, utilized in the past, the Education Plus Cooperative, when our Board of Education accepted a proposal for recent work that was completed at Horseman Elementary. The district would like to utilize this same process and the team that Garland provided to us for that work at Horseman to complete these necessary repairs that our other two schools mentioned. The Education Plus Cooperative is in its ninety-sixth year and allows districts to benefit from cooperative purchasing. Education Plus publishes bids and newspapers throughout the state for those interested in the competitive bidding process per category, and our agreement with Garland through Education Plus ensures that our district and Board of Education, that any Missouri public school district and other political subdivision and nonprofit organization may purchase products and services at the prices indicated in that agreement. So, with that information, I am seeking Board of Education approval to accept the bids to complete the repairs at both Smith Cotton High School and at Smith Cotton Junior High. The total cost for the repairs at Smith Cotton High School is nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six, and the repairs at Smith Cotton Junior High School FEMA area total twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle?
No, thank you for getting this done, we appreciate it, I'll move its approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you. Dr. Fraley, the FEMA shelter repair at Skyline?
Yes, it's a project, since the FEMA structure was built at Skyline, the shelter, and for those of you that don't know, that is an underground shelter that's available to the public, it's one of several throughout Pettis County. There are some discrepancies in, you know, what, what is owned by the county, what is owned by FEMA, what is owned by the school district. So basically, in layman's terms, it's a joint effort to create a solution for the water retentive problem that, that happens inside the FEMA shelter. As the West Central Conference Principal of the Year could attest, that many times when they have to relocate for even a drill over into the FEMA shelter, there's staying, too much standing water upwards above the ankle at times, and, and, yes. Due to many reasons that I won't get into, take a lot to explain, but I reached out to the County Commission earlier this year, we've been working back and forth, the county, Pettis County spent money to have civil engineers come in and assess this, this structure, come up with a plan of action. It's a first-step plan of action to try to get more of the groundwater away from that structure, in kind of a twofold process, actually threefold. So, one part of that is getting the groundwater that's coming down next on the building side of the, the shelter, so the, the side next to the school, Skyline School. And right now, that water is routing down towards the soccer field, where it's all routing down that direction. So, we're going to redirect that water and take it out to the sewer drain out on Thirty-second Street. So, half that water will get, go the other direction. They're also going to put guttering around the edges and additionally try to reroute the, the water that's coming down, that's where the Lutheran Church comes into play, and this is really hard to describe to somebody if you're not looking at a map and looking at pictures. But the runoff water coming down from Trinity Lutheran is coming across that access road, and it will come and, and go right up against the, would be the east side of the shelter. So, the county proposal, the engineering proposal is also to try to reroute that water, which means we would need to re-crown that access road and cut a ditch to the east of that, that will carry the water coming down off the hill from the church side, down over the hill to the south side of our property at Skyline. That would require, because the, the property line is really, really tight with the church. So that would require either an easement from the church, or for the district to purchase property from the church, to make that happen, because in order to, to regrade that road properly, we would encroach on church property. The, the minister, the reverend of the church is meeting with her council to decide some things, we need to, the county, we're waiting on the county to flag out the area to determine exactly where that road grade would encroach upon church property. I did receive contact from the church today that would, they would lean more towards selling a small strip of land to the school versus an easement to protect themselves from a liability standpoint, but I do not have an offer or an, an amount or the exact amount of footage that's going to be required. So, a lot of pieces in this puzzle to get sorted out. What you have in front of you, because timelines are, are tight, as far as even an approval to, to co-op with Pettis County Commission on this plan, now, the property with the church would certainly then come in thereafter, but at least to approve the plan as it sits. That way, the county can go ahead and schedule with potentially a lot of savings that's already in this cost that you see in front of you, if Pettis County Road Department can do part of this work and not have that hired out and contracted. And I, I'm sure there's probably some questions here, because it's a lot of information, and this, this is not a fail-safe solution to the problem, but we, the engineers feel that it will be very, very helpful. There are some structural issues with the, how the floor lies and where the water runs off inside, and where the sump pump station is located. The other component is to take the water coming out of the sump pump and pumping it up and over into the drain that's going to go out and shoot to Thirty-second Street, to that sewage runoff. Because right now, that pump water is also going down, it's just going into the dirt and gravel to the south side of the property, and basically, all that water is pulling up and then just coming and filtering back into the structure.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
I don't have any questions, I just want to commend you at a time when other governmental org, organizations in the county seem to have a problem with dealing with county commissioners. I, I commend you for being proactive and getting something done. This thing has been, it's had problems. It was an excellent idea, it's had problems, and I want to thank you for sitting down with the commission and basically saying, get it done, we'll get it taken care of. I'm going to move for approval of this matter.
Any other discussion? Then I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor say nay. So it is approved, thank you.
And I, I will bring back, once I get an answer from the church, I will be bringing something back along that line with the property acquisition.
Okay, next is Loftus Early Childhood Request for an additional position, I see Mr. Sherman?
Yes, I'm, I'm requesting two additional teaching positions and two paraprofessional positions. One teaching and one paraprofessional position would be for this school year, for immediate hire, and then one teacher and one paraprofessional for the next school year.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sherman?
I'd make the comment that Mr. Sherman's program continues to grow. One thing, just as a heads-up, I mean, part of our long-range plan that we're going to bring back and update the board in January, Mr. Pyle is going to spearhead that, and that finishing out the, the unfinished areas of the loftus is probably sooner than later.
I kind of wondered if we were getting close to that?
Within the memo, you might also just note Mr. Sherman's plan to add one teaching, one pair for the remainder of this year, and then one for next year as needed. He's going to obviously monitor numbers, and if he doesn't need to fill those positions, then he would just maintain them for when he would have to need them. If he doesn't need them at the beginning of next year, it's very likely he'll need them by this time of next year, and so they would already be on the books and ready for him to fill at that time.
Great, okay. Any questions?
Move its approval.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you, Mr. Sherman. And Ms. Kimpton? For the UPN Fiber estimates?
Yes, I am asking for approval for this cost estimate from UPN Fiber to the new location at Lafayette for the new central office. This will, this, the Lafayette location will be our dinners, our data center also, so we use UPN currently for our fiber ring, and this will just be included in that fiber ring. And I apologize, I just saw that there's a third page that says Option Two from Washington. What happened was, originally UPN had given me two options, one was from the junior high and running, and it had all kinds of turns, which could cause issues to the Lafayette location, and then the second one, which is the one that I'm proposing tonight, from Twenty-Fourth Street and running up Washington, a lot less turns and about twenty grand cheaper.
And is that underground or above ground?
Under, it's below ground.
I'm sorry, this is underground?
Below ground, yes.
Thank you.
And also, because Lafayette will become our new data center, I'm hoping to secure E-rate funds, so that would be around eighty percent of it covered if we could.
And, and for some of our newer board members, Ms. Kimpton, could you give a brief what E-rate funding means?
So basically, E-rate, it, it's federal funding that we can secure based on our population, our students, and free and reduced lunch count, and that will determine how much funding we can get, and only certain things qualify. Turning Lafayette into our data center makes it qualify for E-rate funding.
And is that typically eighty, eighty-twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Which is eighty on the federal side and twenty-eight-dollar cost?
Eighty percent they will pay for.
Are there any questions, additional questions, comments?
How much, how much of UPN's system is, is undergrounded as opposed to being up in the air?
I do not know that answer, Ryan, do you know that answer?
Not, not a lot. A lot of it's above ground, in my understanding, except for out at Smith Cotton High School and over to the loftus. Ryan may be able to answer that a little more accurately.
Having been through an entire day's outage with Spectrum last week, and, and with, and their problem has been sabotage of their, or vandalism of their system, in, not just in Missouri, but in other areas, the gradual undergrounding of this system would be in our best interests.
I don't have an exact percentage on what is above ground and what is below ground, but most of our system is, is above ground.
But that's why this proposal, we had specifically asked for underground because of this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I'll move its approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you. Mr. Curry?
Yes, on behalf of our Smith Cotton High School Girls' Basketball Program, Coach Rhodes would like to take the opportunity to recognize Mr. Brian Bridges for his donation to the girls' basketball program for fifteen hundred dollars towards basketball shoes. Very nice connection that our coach has with a contributor, so we thank him greatly.
Very much so. Do I have a motion to approve the donation?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved. And Mrs. Grinney, is she here? The Lauren, Lauren Kennedy donation?
Hello, asking for approval of a donation of five hundred and twenty-five dollars from School District Foundation from, I'm going to say Lauren Kennedy, who passed away, who was an educator. School social, I remembered it was something in the school district, but she was an active one to give back to the community, and so we're going to put that towards our yearbook for our kids.
Any questions?
No, move its approval.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. It is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to items under discussion, baseball assistant coach at high school position, Mr. Curry?
Yes, and Mr. Middleton is here as well this evening. This is a discussion item, as Mr. Middleton approached us with the possibility of looking to add a, an additional baseball coach for our program as we look at specialized instruction as well as, you know, the most important things of just managing the number of students that we have. Mr. Middleton was approached and wanted to bring this to the board for discussion this evening. evening.
Yeah, just like Mr. Curry said, it's, there's, there's a few, I think right now we have three or four nights that we have our varsity, JV, and freshman teams all playing at different sites with, currently, right now, we have four paid, four paid positions, so splitting the coaches up and trying to divide and conquer is a little bit of a struggle with that, with the volunteer. I mean, we could send one coach to each spot, but as you know, baseball, softball kind of requires almost two coaches to be there. It's just kind of what I think is going to help us in the future, and just in my personal opinion, this will be somebody, maybe not for this year, but next year, we would hire strictly as a pitching coach too, to solidify the staff a little bit, but.
Wanted to go ahead and start the discussions early.
And Mr. Middleton, could you, I'm going to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm putting you on the spot. So how does this addition to baseball would relate in retrospect to the needs of softball?
Well, I was going to lead into that here in a minute, because it's probably going to come up next fall, too, that we're going to need a softball position, because they're kind of in the same boat to where we have three paid, and we have nights that have JV and varsity, and next year with the softball program growing, we definitely need to split and get as many games as possible for those two teams. So I would say in the future, the girls' softball is going to need another paid position also. So is that a this year thing? I don't know. It's something we need to discuss. This is part of that program evaluation that we're doing right now with all of our programs. It might not be this year, but definitely in the future, we're going to need to look to add help.
Any questions for Mr. Middleton? If not, this will be brought back for approval at a later date.
In a future month, sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Smithcotton Junior High Course Description Guide. Mrs. Knowman?
Good evening. We have a couple additions that we would like to make to our course guides for next year at the junior high. One is an introduction to seventh grade athletic conditioning, which would hopefully provide some more physical education opportunities for our seventh grade students who now have some opportunity, opportunities in athletic programs that we didn't necessarily have in the last few years. We've added a few extra sports in the last couple of years at the junior high, and so giving those kids that opportunity, we think would be beneficial. With that would be the removal of Lifetime Fitness, which is currently just an eighth grade course. Those eighth grade students would still have physical education opportunities, whether they wanted to go to Athletic Conditioning, Intro to Athletic Conditioning, or just regular PE. We also this year added Legobotics, and we are looking to add an additional course in that field called Advanced Legobotics. So this would be for students who have already taken Legobotics and were successful, received a B or higher, and want to be pushed even more. So they would have some more critical thinking type software, software and 3D programs that they would be using to build their robotic items for that course. We are also, last year the board approved the three additional sixth grade reading positions, and so with that approval came some, some things that are going away. One is our sixth grade vocal music position. That was determined last year, so we are making plans for how that will work, and what we are recommending is doing away with our sixth grade auditioned show choir so that we can absorb the position, those sections of vocal music and provide more opportunity for the kids that want to be in, in vocal music at the sixth grade level. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, this will be brought back also at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Fraley, digital signee to display RFP?
Yes, this is something that's been on my mind for a few years now, to be honest with you, and that is, if, as a district, we've been approached by several individual buildings wanting to potentially buy digital displays for the marquees and to go out and, you know, get quotes, et cetera, to make those electronic, make them digital, make them programmable from inside the building via Wi-Fi and et cetera. And is it time for our district to move forward? I thought, well, you know, instead of doing it here and there, and here and there, why not, you know, not play favorites and do the whole district and, and modernize that aspect of it? We could certainly put more, interchange the display a little more often, recognize students, recognize staff on those marquees. There, there are some, believe it or not, some dangers in changing these marquees because they're so old, and you have to literally go out and hold the, the front up and hold on and hope the wind's not, and sometimes you can't do it when the wind's blowing because it's too dangerous, or, so just kind of wanting to test those waters and see if the board would, you know, this is for discussion, of course, this time I'll bring this back if we want to do an RFP and have companies and solicit companies to, to give us some recommendations and quotations on what that would be across the district.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? All right, we will bring that back, please. Dr. Fraley, SMS renovations at Skyline? SMS and Skyline?
Yes, you know, when, I said what a task it is sometimes, a district that has over, you know, almost a million square foot of facility, and close to 200 acres, and that takes a lot. And things come up. Sometimes they come up fast, and sometimes they don't, but I was made aware of some additional issues that we're having at SMS. SMS, the front part of the Sedalia Middle School, the main front wall, here I am again trying to explain a visual, if you're not there, it's hard to understand. So the main hallway, if you're on the front side of the building, the, if you're going down the right side wall of that hallway, there's, I guess that must have been built on a particular slab, and there must be another slab that's out in front of that. So there's, there's classrooms that jut out a little bit from the main building. Well, and we, we fixed one of these a few years ago, but now it has grown across the whole length of the front of the middle school, to where that slab and those classrooms are gradually sinking down into the ground. So you have wall separation from the main inside wall, you know, an inch to two inches in places. You have classrooms now, and this has like gotten worse like in the last two months. You have classrooms where kids' pencils won't sit on the desk because they roll off because there's such a tilt to the floor, or that the teacher has to hold on to the table in a rolling chair when she's doing small group instruction to keep from rolling backwards all the time. So we need to address this issue and go out to, to bid probably for a concrete foundation restoration of the front of that building. We go down and sink pillars down into the ground, fill those and jack those, those back up to where they need to be. And then, all about the same day, or a two-day span in the last week or so, I was, found out that Skyline Elementary has a similar issue in the area that's basically the storage rooms off the kitchen. So we have the same problem in that area where that section, and you can see, it's a little easier to see there, of a different set of slab concrete, and where those two slabs meet. So that slab in that area is starting to sink down. So you, we have a metal plate now from where the main kitchen is into the, the storage utility area of the kitchen, covering up the crack in the floor that there's about a discrepancy of, of again, one or two inches in, in the floor in that area. So they will, they will have to go in, drill holes in those areas inside the building, and do whatever it is that those, those experts do to go down, and they will drill down far enough to where they hit solid, very solid ground, not necessarily bedrock, but a solid footing is what they feel they need, and then gradually push those, raise those back up. So those are two major projects that have come up here just of, as of late, that, that are going to need to be addressed sooner than later.
When you're doing that, will Hollis and Miller also be, and their, their engineers be looking at, at the same area at Parkview to see if we have to do something similar there? Since the schools are twins, you might as, you might as well plan on doing something similar there.
I don't disagree. And I, and I walked, I walked through both those facilities with Hollis and Miller the other day, about, and they were the ones that kind of advised me as to what the foundation restoration, what that looks like. It does require work inside the building. You can't just do it all from the outside digging under. You have to put so many different holes in the existing floors to make it supported well enough.
We might as well get used to this, because at Hebrew Hunt, for instance, the entire, you know, what's affectionately called the mud room is there because, because of the way that the east side of the school lies, they have to put mud in there, they had to keep a mound of dirt in there, in that room to counterbalance it, and with proper pilings and things like that, you could take, you could open up an entire area that would be a useful computer lab, for instance.
Yes, I, you know, we, we need to explore all, all these options and, and come up with, you know, potential solutions for these. Additionally, in your memo, I have mentioned other improvements to SMS, that might include restroom improvements, the original ceiling grids, the, part of the buildings, part of the areas, the original ceiling has been replaced with new drop ceiling. Most of the areas, it's still the original drop ceiling. It is, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, it does not look good at all. So I'm suggesting that we, basically, you know, we, we're doing the north side of SMS, and I'm kind of kicking myself, you know, in the derriere just a tad by, you know, not seeing some of these other issues that we probably need to address all at once. But if we're going to do that building and get it right for potential transition, I think we need to do it right. And we need to go in and fix it and repair it and make it look like it's supposed to before, before we move people in.
Any questions?
The, the original open classroom area, you know, the, the original junior high was all pretty much wide open. I, as part of renovating it, I would hope that we would look at proper sizing of classrooms, excuse me, and hallways as we, you know, that thing was cut up badly.
And it, it's plainly easy to see, when, when they enclosed the classroom from the open concept, they just, they just built walls up to the ceiling grid. None of the original ceiling was replaced at any point in time, they just extended the, the partitions, made them permanent, all, all up to the hang ceiling, that's it.
Any other questions?
No.
And last, under discussion, the grade level configurations. Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, that goes hand in hand with the previous discussion about renovations to the entire of SMS school. You know, we, we've been in these discussions for quite some time, we all know that. I've met with the sixth grade team together. I've met with the fifth grade team at SMS. I am scheduling a meeting for, that'll, that'll, we talked about that at the admin meeting today, December 20th. I'm scheduling a meeting for any fourth grade and/or elementary teachers that want to come, and we'll have it here at the Hecker to give feedback on what would be the best configuration. Research is very, very indecisive as to how much academic impact there is. There's pretty much, you can find articles in both directions. The one constant is that a K8 configuration is the best academic format, it's the only really conclusive research base, grade level configuration. And there's, there's reasons for that, most of those are found in very rural areas, so a little different telling issue, but that, I don't believe is an option for our facility structure. So I just want to, you know, make the board aware, and if there's any discussion to be had at this time, if not, after I meet with that fourth grade team, I also have a parent advisory meeting this week, and I'm going to ask that question to the parents, breathe back that feedback, and hopefully in the month of February, we can make a decision and make a determination of how we're going to use SMS moving forward, what grade level configurations we're going to, where we're going to see. I think the common thread is, you know, there may not be an exact right answer, but an answer is needed regardless. So, any, any questions or comments?
No. Okay. Next is information. Mr. Curry, the benefit broker interview update?
Yep, just an update for the board of where we're at in the process of our benefit broker interviews. You can see in the memo there that we just led with the policy 0342 on conflict of interest, just to maintain transparency with our staff, our stakeholders, and of course, the Board of Education, and making sure, as we interviewed four broker firms, one of the firms had an affiliate that was tied with their RFQ, that also has an affiliation with Mr. Groupie's firm, so we're just making sure that that was upfront and clear for everyone in the process. So the Insurance Benefit Committee, as you can see, consisted of both secondary and elementary teaching staff, representing NEA and SEA as well. We had business administration across the district as well as administration. So Ms. Heimsoth was an, is an elementary teacher representing, she's a member of NEA. Mrs. Inlow is a secondary teacher who is representing SEA. Mrs. Blackaby and Mrs. Hamerly, Hammerly represent our business professionals in the district. Mr. Norton and myself are part of the administrative group, and then Mr. Kimpton represented the Board of Directors. So the committee conducted four interviews on Thursday, November 30th, and you can see the firms interviewed, Bukati Companies, Holmes and Murphy, USI, and Assured Partners. The committee took a little time to digest a lot of information throughout the day. We came back together and met on Monday, December 4th, where we, you know, had very quality discussion, and determination was to bring back two finalists for further interviews that we will conduct later this week on Thursday, with an anticipated goal of bringing a recommendation in January to the board.
I'm going to just jump out here and say a huge thank you to the committee. I know that was a lot of time, a lot of information given, and it's very appreciated that these individuals wanted to. Also, I understand we do have a member from one of these that wants to speak tonight.
Yes. Yes, I appreciate the opportunity. Good evening, guys. I know there's probably a window of the amount of time you'd give one insurance professional in a year to talk about insurance, and if there's a ceiling on that, I'm probably swiftly reaching it, but I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to address the board on behalf of my team here at Assured Partners. I know the Insurance Benefits Committee is working diligently to evaluate our value proposition and the proposition of the other firms from the Kansas City area, and of course, I, I certainly know this isn't the time, nor would it be appropriate to really go into a, a value proposition, but I certainly hope to deliver the committee everything that they need to make a decision and leave the door open to this, this board, so that if you guys have any questions of us directly, we always want to pride ourselves in being available, both our service teams. available, both our service teams and myself, to this board. And while, again, I don't feel it necessary to really divulge into a capabilities presentation, I feel compelled to show up and advocate for my team. We have served the district here locally for over 30 years, and in those 30 years, we've continued to negotiate the most favorable deals for this district and the employees in the midst, even in the midst of tough, tough claims years. We've brought new ideas and ways of thinking of how to finance and administer this program over the years that we feel has benefited the district. And even in recent years, we provided the district with opportunities to contain costs in new ways, of which year over year in these previous years has resulted in nearly a $1 million surplus over budget and a decrease in overall spend from the most previous year. And while I don't want to go line for line, I'll save that for the committee's enjoyment, if you want to call it that, I want this board and this district, and really specifically the employees of this district, to know that if we're selected, we'll continue to lobby on your behalf, we'll continue to negotiate the best deal we can in the marketplace, and we'll continue to fight fiercely for the employees of this district, just as Dr. Fraley has done with, and the rest of this board have done with salary schedules and everything this board does for recruitment and retention, just as Mr. Cobb's had alluded to earlier. So we're excited about the opportunity to continue serving the district. We hope that this process really will just reinvigorate the trust, maybe in some cases reestablish trust for our firm, but we're excited about the opportunity that this district has, even in the next year, to offer a really great program. So I appreciate the minute to give me today.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next is conference affiliations, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, this is, I wanted to be transparent with the public. There's been several rumors, et cetera, around. I've, you know, I personally met with the Booty Club parents about this issue. I know Mr. Middleton has had several discussions with his coaches, et cetera. I think conference realignment, and anybody that follows college athletics knows that there's been a lot of that going on in recent years, and for whatever reason or another, I think that bug has bit the high school ranks. For whatever reason, a lot of conference realignment has happened in the state of Missouri. At first, when we found out that Rolla, Lebanon, and Waynesville and Camdenton were potentially, they were approved actually to join the CMAC, which is our current conference, that sent us kind of, to be honest with you, a little bit in a panic mode because of the distance of travel. Our, our school district had been in a conference with those schools years and years ago, wasn't about to be sending our, our high school activities participants, you know, on the road in the wintertime for two and three hour trips back and forth, getting home at midnight or later. So at that point in time, I instructed Mr. Middleton to explore other options. So we did, and we looked at some other conference possibilities. But long story short, Lebanon and Waynesville decided not to join the CMAC, and they stayed in the southern part of the state with Springfield Schools. Rolla decided to stay independent, and Camdenton did join the CMAC. So they will be the eighth team in the CMAC starting next school year. The other options that we looked at, you know, for many, many different reasons beyond our control, were not viable, did not turn out as viable options. So we will remain in the CMAC for another school year. I just wanted to say that publicly so everybody would be informed and we would have record of it.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley?
All I'll say is it's nice to know who our friends are.
I just, I want to comment. I appreciate the effort that Dr. Fraley and, and Mr. Middleton put out. I followed it closely and really, really felt like we had a something brewing, and I appreciate the effort.
Definitely, so thank you, Mr. Middleton. Okay, then next is Dr. Fraley, the community input survey results?
Yeah, just, this is information for the board. I tasked our administrators across the district to have open community nights, to tour the facilities, to fill out surveys as to how they rate the different areas of our buildings, everything from restrooms to parking lots, playgrounds, to classrooms, et cetera. As you'll see in your data, I don't think any of the information is necessarily surprising from each building. And our turnout, other than our turnout, our turnout of these survey results, we had such little participation, it's hard to look at those results as overly reliable and/or valid. But many of them support, support what we already know. And of course, our newer buildings scored a lot higher than our older buildings. I just wanted the board to have that information. This will be one more factor that guides our long range plan.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley on any of this information? Thank you.
And next is some information about MSBA, just to allow with new board members, that MSBA does offer a governance team award, which the board received a couple of years ago. This would be a great goal for the Board of Education to work towards over the next year. There is some training that is still needed. You have before you your individual MSBA credit hours. I will say, I contacted MSBA over the last week, week and a half. All the sessions that were attended in November may not be shown on this yet. They assured me it would be by the end of the year. So if you get to yours and you see that nothing is really showing for November, supposedly it's in the process, they will get that on there. There's also, not only is there a team award that is available, there's also individual certifications that MSB offers for all board members. All of this information is on their website if you'd like to look into it any further. And I'll probably be giving some updates on the governance team award because when I looked at it, we were really, really close. So I feel like over the next year, that's probably something that we could accomplish, which would be great. I am a firm believer in board members staying educated. That's what we do, and that's what we govern is the school district, and we also expect that of all of our staff, continuing education. So lead by example, I'm a firm believer in educating board members. So anybody have any questions, let me know. Next is Mr. Pyle with the SMS gym floor.
Yes, thank you. Our Board of Education provided permission during our November meeting for the district to seek bids for the removal of gym flooring at Sedalia Middle School. As you know, that's part of our current project that's going on there now, along with reconfiguring the former pool area and some of those updates that are happening. The flooring is suspected to have a minute amount of mercury content that will require specialized plans for removal. The district will need a qualified company to develop specifications for this job for removing and disposal with applicable local, state, and federal regulations to provide this services with a clinical hygienic, industrial hygienist for monitoring this. So a lot of words there, but quite a process, a minimum of 12 air samples will be required. And once the specification plan is in place, the district will need to hire a company to remove and dispose of this flooring. Just an update for you tonight that we did advertise that. We did have two companies reach out, but they have not submitted a bid at this time. We were hopeful to bring something back tonight for approval, to ask for approval, but don't have that at this time. It's not going to slow the project down as long as we can get something back within the next month or two because that work was going to take place during the summer. So just, just an update for our Board of Education.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle? Dr. Fraley, the attendance reports?
Yeah, you have two, two reports, 8.6, 8.7. The first one is our 90%, 90/90, which of course is our APR, where we get our APR score. You'll see that the district overall is at 87.59, down a little bit from October at 87.91. I want to commend our administrators, our social workers, our counselors, everybody involved that really reach out to families to, to make sure those kids that with low attendance are getting to school. Our ADA attendance at 8.7, again, that's how our funding is allocated. You will see that as from a district perspective, we are holding at 94.24%. Now, this is as of October 31st, so that's changed a little bit, but that's what we have for this, this board packet. We'll have November as the next time, November and December. So I can tell you that that number's reducing a little bit over the last couple of weeks because of the amount of sickness that's going around. So fingers crossed that we can hold on a while longer.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? And that concludes tonight's meeting. I need a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District 200, having duly voted to close its meetings as authorized by Section 610.021 RSMO subsection 1, legal actions, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting, 13, personnel records, 14, records which are protected, 18, public safety or law enforcement, and 19, security system and structural plans by law of the Missouri statutes, will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on December 11th, 2023 at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Mrs. Barthbagen?
Aye.
Oh, did you say?
I said aye.
Oh, okay. Speak.
I didn't speak loud enough for you.
Okay. Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kempton?
Aye.
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Mrs. Schrader, both aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a very Merry Christmas.